In favor? Okay. Can I get a spy show hands who's here to testify for SB 160? Okay. And finally, SJR 19? Okay, great. All right. Thank you. I think one. Okay. Because most everybody is here to testify. So. All right. All right. Okay, so we will now begin our hearing with SJR 8. Senator Igle, please proceed. Senator Igle?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm State Senator Bill Igle. It's my pleasure to present Senate Joint Resolution 8 for the benefit of the committee. This is a constitutional amendment that, if adopted by the voters, prohibits the General Assembly from appropriating or otherwise authorizing funds for any clinic, physician's office, or any other place or facility in which abortions are performed or induced, or in any affiliate or associate of such entity. And Madam Chairwoman, I think Missouri has been a real leader when it comes to defending life, defending the rights of the unborn, and I expect that this would be a continuation. Senate Joint Resolution 8 would be a continuation of that legacy. We were the first state in the entire country to ban abortion within our borders, and I expect that this is an additional protection enshrined in our constitution that would ensure that we are the protectors of rights, starting with life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, but that first one's really what we're focusing on here, protecting life. I think that an overwhelming majority of Missourians have looked for these protections and have supported the efforts to protect life at all points, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does any member of the committee have any questions for the senator? Seeing none? We'll move on to testimony. Those testifying in favor of?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. For the record, Susan Klein, representing Missouri Right to Life, here to go on record in support of SJR 8. Missouri has long been a state of pro-life work, people who have come forward, who seek to protect the unborn and also protect the mom. We've had a difficult road in defunding Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood is still receiving checks from the state of Missouri, and for the following reason, Missouri Right to Life supports SJR 8. In 2020, the Missouri Supreme Court ruled that no longer could the legislature legislate in a budget bill about defunding Planned Parenthood, and we've been dealing with that issue for many years since. Obviously, before that, at least five years, if not longer, the legislature made it clear that they did not want state monies or public monies going to Planned Parenthood to, at that time, to fund abortion and also subsidize abortion work that was being done by Planned Parenthood. So, from the perspective of where we stand as a state, we've always stood to protect the unborn and to protect the moms. So, the legislature had to deal with, what do we do with that we can't put that in the budget anymore? Even though we legislate in the budget for many other things, obviously, we have been singled out in that we cannot protect unborn babies and moms in the budget bills to make sure that our tax dollars are not used to take the lives of those unborn babies. In 2021, when Cole County Circuit Judge Beedham in Cole County Court ruled, and he was making a decision on Medicaid expansion, but in the conversation that he had with some of the attorneys at the time, he said, "If you want to defund Planned Parenthood, put it in statute." And he listed out the different sections, 208151, 208152, or 208153. However, in 2022, instead of putting it in statute, we once again, as a legislative body, you put it back in the budget bill, with the exception that you did a zero-line item for abortion providers. Obviously, we hoped and prayed that that would work, but the court in December of 2022 said it does not work. You cannot put the language in a budget bill for pro-life protections. The pro-abortion Biden administration has made it clear that they are going to fund abortion in any way they can, at any cost. Since pro-life language has been singled out by the Missouri Supreme Court and other courts, it's now time to put pro-life protections in statute, whether that's done by you, which we would like for it to be done by you, but we also understand that the citizens of Missouri are very pro-life, and from that perspective, we support SJR 8.
Thanks so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Sorry?
Are there any questions for the witness?
Seeing none? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a quick, now it looks like we've got a quorum now, so we're going to go ahead and take a roll really quickly. Mr. Secretary, please call a roll.
Senators Coleman, Carter, Arthur, Gannon, Moon, Thompson, Rader, Washington.
Here.
With your, a quorum of four here and three absent?
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, we are going to go ahead and set time limits for our witnesses to two minutes. We'll just keep track of that. That way, the flow just keeps moving and we won't get hung up too long. So, all right. Any other witnesses testifying in favor of SJR 8?
Madam Chairwoman, members of the committee, Samuel Lee with Campaign Life Missouri to go on record in support of Senator Igle's SJR 8. And I'm not going to go back over the history, except I think this is the fourth time, if I'm counting correctly, that Senator Igle has introduced this. First of all, in special session right after the Supreme Court prohibited the legislature from controlling how taxpayer funds are being spent, and I think every session since then. So, we're very grateful for that. Planned Parenthood is the largest provider and promoter of abortion in the country. At least 40% of all abortions are done by Planned Parenthood. They have a long, long history of promotion of abortion. I would say that even though Planned Parenthood is not performing abortions in Missouri right now, Planned Parenthood affiliates are, that are in Missouri, are doing abortions in Kansas and Illinois. Because their affiliates are doing them in other states, they would be covered by this law, and the General Assembly would be prohibited from reimbursing Planned Parenthood for any activity that they're involved with, whether it's Medicaid-funded abortions or other types of services that they're providing. And again, we're just very grateful, again, that this is being introduced.
Thank you for your testimony. Does any member of the committee have any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Please make sure you leave your witness form and thank you.
Mailed one in. E-mailed one in, yes.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else testifying in favor of SJR 8?
Good morning, Senator and committee. Thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. My name is Timothy Faber, and I'm here on behalf of the Missouri Baptist Convention. We strongly support SJR 8. In our thinking, it's almost a no-brainer. If abortion is illegal, then funding abortion is funding an illegal activity, and I don't think that's the position the state wants to be in. Therefore, to not fund abortion would simply be in keeping with everything else that we've done in regard to abortion and making it illegal. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there any committee member that has any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you so much for your time.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, Jamie Morris with the Missouri Catholic Conference here in support of SJR 8. Don't want to repeat what's been said, but just want to thank the sponsor again for bringing this forward, and we're very hopeful this will be the year this crosses the finish line. And again, want to thank you for hearing it and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Next witness in favor?
Hi, my name is Jeremy Jacobs with Bound for Life St. Louis. Thank you for bringing this to the committee and for hearing. Thank you for, Senator Igle, for presenting this. Stand firmly in support of SJR 8. In 2019, this legislative body recognized that life begins at conception, and it is logically consistent, as the previous witness stated, to not fund an organization that is destroying that life that began at conception. So, I strongly urge you to pass this out of committee and pass it out of our legislative bodies so that we can remain consistent on the issue of life in this state.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there any question for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you so much. Is there anybody else testifying in favor of SJR 8?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Bev Aylin, here testifying on behalf of the Warren County Republican Committee and the Republican Counties Committee Association. The Missouri Republican platform has had, in its platform for many years, and in the current one, several planks and statements regarding protecting the sanctity of human life, so therefore, we're going to go on record in support of SJR 8.
Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Are there any other testimony in favor of SJR 8?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Bev Aylin, here testifying on behalf of the Warren County Republican Committee and the Republican Counties Committee Association. The Missouri Republican platform has had, in its platform for many years, and in the current one, several planks and statements regarding protecting the sanctity of human life, so therefore, we're going to go on record in support of SJR 8.
Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Are there any other testimony in favor of SJR 8? Mr. Chairman? Seeing none?
I apologize. I have to, I won't be able to stay for further testimony. I have to get to another commitment.
That's fine. We'll vote this out today then, right? No, I'm kidding. Without, no, I'm just kidding.
Sounds good.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Any other testimony in favor? Any in opposition? Please come forward, state your name, begin when you're ready.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa Wellberry. I am the Vice President of Policy and Advocacy at Planned Parenthood of the St. Louis Region and Southwest Missouri. We are an outsized provider to Medicaid patients operating eight health centers across the state. I am testifying in opposition to SJR 8. We have been here many times before, so-called "defund Planned Parenthood" bills that then become laws and then have become lawsuits in which the state has lost time and again. These bills block patients from accessing preventive care, including birth control, cancer screenings, and STI testing and treatment, and they are discriminatory and they violate federal law. So, I'm here to talk to you once again about what is at stake. Planned Parenthood serves 52% of all family planning patients who rely on publicly funded programs, including Title 10, Medicaid, and the Right Time Initiative in Missouri. By targeting Planned Parenthood, these bills target an expert network of healthcare providers. By targeting Planned Parenthood, these bills threaten to further fray an already overextended safety net, and that is the point, to target people with low incomes, women, people of color, and their most trusted healthcare provider. Rhetoric around these bills also invoke a history of racism at healthcare institutions, and that is a reality Planned Parenthood publicly reckons with and addresses daily, as does the medical profession. But I ask you, how do you then defend these policies that by discriminating against people who rely on publicly funded programs like Medicaid that disproportionately harm people of color? How does blocking people from accessing preventive care address the unconscionably high black maternal mortality rates in Missouri? On June 15th of last year...
Thank you for your testimony. If you want to present or submit the written, we can have that distributed, too.
I do have a copy of that.
Great. Thank you. And I have a question for you. Does the clinics you're representing perform abortions?
The clinics that we're representing in Missouri do not perform abortions.
Okay. Then what is your opposition to the bill?
This bill is not about abortion. This bill is about Medicaid insurance coverage of preventive services.
Well, perhaps I misread it, but I thought that it stated pretty clearly that no expenditure of funds to any clinic, physician's office, or other place facility in which abortions are performed or induced. So, that's, I think that's what the bill is about. It doesn't say anything about healthcare.
Let me rephrase then. This is, this is related to abortion only in that the attacks on abortion were never going to be the end. This is now the attack on preventive services and using rhetoric around abortion to discriminate against people who rely on Medicaid for preventive services at Planned Parenthood, which is a crucial part of the safety net here in Missouri.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you for your testimony. Any others in opposition to SJR 8?
Good morning. My name's Michelle Trippiano. I'm the Executive Director for Missouri Family Health Council. We run the Title 10 Federal Family Planning Program in the state of Missouri, so we receive the federal funds for the family planning program, and we run the Right Time Initiative. Therefore, we have a large network of family planning providers across the state that operate 19 different health centers, operating 79 sites throughout Missouri, both in urban and rural areas. We work with health departments, federally qualified health centers, Planned Parenthood, community action agencies, and hospital-based clinics to ensure that low-income uninsured folks have access to the care that they need, including well-person exams, contraceptive services, and other family planning needs. What I'm here to tell you is that when you are targeting and attacking one provider, you're actually impacting an entire safety net. The safety net is at capacity, that there are long waiting times at many of our providers. And so, if you take and put a hole in the safety net by eliminating one very qualified, high-volume provider, the rest of the safety net cannot pick up that work. Planned Parenthood sees 52% of the patients that we see throughout our entire network. So, we see about 40,000 patients a year through all those various sites, health departments, federally qualified health centers, et cetera. And so, while you are attacking and trying to eliminate one provider that is very qualified, that is an expert in this, that the safety net relies on, it takes all of the safety net working together to ensure the needs, both in rural and urban areas, are met. And so, to answer your question, Senator Moon, is that this isn't about abortion. What you're doing is you are eliminating Medicaid. You're saying Medicaid, people can't choose where they're going to receive their Medicaid services. I mean, it has nothing to do with abortion, but yet it's going to impact a vast majority of providers across the state. And so, there are unintended consequences when you, again, are focused and sort of have a political attack on one particular provider. And so, we ask you and stand in opposition to these attacks because the impact is devastating.
And your time is up. Thank you for your testimony. And I have a question. So, are you saying that since Planned Parenthood in other states in the Union provide abortion or abortion services, then that will impact your funding in Missouri?
So, it doesn't impact our funding. What you're trying to do in these bills is eliminate and to discriminate against Medicaid patients and where they can choose to access their services. Therefore, you would send Medicaid patients who are currently maybe accessing services at Planned Parenthood. You'd be saying you can no longer access those services at Planned Parenthood, and you have to go to another provider. Well, let me tell you, there aren't a ton of providers around that are experts, that have appointments available, that are taking new patients. And again, the safety net is at capacity, and you need all the providers working together in order to meet the needs of Missourians.
And I guess that's where I'm confused, because it doesn't mention Medicaid in the bill. And so, perhaps we can talk offline, and you can help me understand where I'm missing that particular part.
Sure. Happy to do so.
Any other questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you for your testimony. Any other witnesses in opposition?
Hello. I just want to thank you for allowing me to testify today in opposition, opposition to SJR 8, SB 160, SJR 19. My name is Elise Kelly, and I'm a member of Pro Choice Missouri. I live in Kansas City's historic northeast. I moved to the Kansas City area 18 years ago from Northern California, and I'm so happy to have made Missouri my forever home. I even moved my sisters out here from California. I got my nursing degree here at University of Missouri-Kansas City, and I have a life with my wonderful partner, Emma, who is a Missouri native. I'm a licensed and practicing registered nurse and a visual artist. And most recently, I've had the privilege of serving clients in family planning, reproductive health, and abortion services in Kansas. Every day, I would see clients from Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Kansas, and of course, Missouri. Missourians are already crossing state lines to receive medical attention because our state is failing them by banning abortion. These bills will only further that damage, hurting Medicaid patients who are already socio-economically vulnerable, restricting essential healthcare access to underserved clients by denying healthcare providers public funding. This is hurting clients seeking many non-abortion services like reproductive healthcare in general, those who need birth control, screening for infections, well-person exams, and gender-affirming care. Everyone deserves access to healthcare, where they live, and the right to choose what they do with their own body and life. These bills will be a burden to Missouri residents and cause undue suffering. And in an overburdened medical system, please do not make it more difficult for people to receive care. I have seen the personal suffering of people traveling many hours for an abortion or other medical services, having to pay for childcare, or even travel with young children, missing time at their jobs and often losing pay. Many people cannot make these sacrifices and end up suffering differently. Delayed medical treatment and lapses in care can even leave clients vulnerable and can be life-threatening. Please be compassionate.
And your time has expired?
Thank you so much.
Any questions for the witness? Senator Gannon?
Just a statement. I would make any sacrifice for my children.
That's awesome.
Even the nine months of pregnancy when they were in my body.
Okay. That's not what I'm talking about, though. I'm just talking about people receiving healthcare services that are even non-abortion services, and those lapses in care are extremely detrimental to people who live in Missouri and who deserve much better.
And again, the question I ask is, because I don't read it in the bill, if you're not providing abortions, where, how is that going to impact your funding?
You know, I could have been wrong. It mentioned affiliates also performing abortion. I know that Planned Parenthood specifically is a four-state affiliate. Of course, the services they do in Missouri do not perform abortion, but that's the way that I interpret it if I'm incorrect.
Well, if that is the case, then there is a solution, and that could be to encourage your affiliates to stop aborting children.
I mean, abortion is a necessary medical treatment. It is healthcare. People need it, and a lot of these people already have many children, and it's not really up to me to decide who should or who shouldn't, but you can't take this from people. It is horrible. It is detrimental. It can ruin people's lives.
Abortion can ruin people's lives. I agree.
And not having an abortion can also ruin people's lives. Thank you so much.
Any other witnesses in opposition? Please come forward. Opposition? Please begin when you're ready.
Good morning. My name is Amy Quo-Hammerman, and I am submitting this testimony in opposition to SJR 8 on behalf of the National Council of Jewish Women, St. Louis. We are a nonprofit organization in the metropolitan St. Louis area, representing over 5,000 members and supporters throughout the state. This bill is aimed at doing one thing, preventing Missouri patients from getting birth control, cancer screenings, and other healthcare, crucial healthcare at Planned Parenthood. It discriminates against people who are insured by Missouri Health Net and from choosing their own healthcare providers. This, if, excuse me, this effort will particularly impact Missouri communities that are already facing extreme disparities in access to healthcare, such as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, people overcoming financial hardship, the LGBTQIA+ community, immigrants, young people, and people living in rural communities, and also people with disabilities. Planned Parenthood plays a vital role in Missouri's healthcare safety net, which is already overburdened, and you've heard from those providers already today. Many safety net providers have weeks-long waits for appointments, and oftentimes, those weeks can make a crucial difference in a person's health. Planned Parenthood fills the gap with appointments that are available on short notice, evening and weekend hours, and the full range of birth control options that are not available at every provider in this state. Based on this, we encourage you to vote no on SJR 8.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you again. Before the next witness comes forward, Senate Bill 160 is similar in its intent, even though it's statutory. I'd like to ask Senator Schorer, if he would come up and present that now, because the testimonies will likely be different. Anybody here to testify in opposition of Senate Bill 160? Okay. Probably similar. So, Senator Schorer, if you wouldn't mind coming up? Thank you. Proceed when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, for the record, Nick Schorer, Senate District Number 2, St. Charles County, presenting Senate Bill 160. As many of you know, in 2022, the United States Supreme Court further solidified the rights of the individual and sovereign states as expressed within the 10th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. For decades, legislators, advocates, private citizens in this great state have worked tirelessly to protect life. If you all remember in the 1980s, Missouri legislators passed legislation, went into law, to establish the fact that life begins at conception. However, since that time, human rights protections that many of us are entitled to have not been extended to those at the very beginning of their lives. Just a few short years ago, I filed HB 2 in the 2021 special session. This bill before you today, Senate Bill 160, substantially similar to that bill. Both Texas and Arkansas, on the Fifth and Eighth Circuits, provide legal authority consistent with the recent explanation from CMS on the scope and ability of the states to set parameters for providers allowing states to disqualify certain providers. These cases provide the legal basis to successfully pass this legislation without losing CMS funding. CMS has held that states have a traditional role protected in law to establish reasonable standards related to the qualifications of providers. While Medicaid guarantees that recipients are free to see any willing and qualified provider that they wish, the state remains a gatekeeper of setting these standards in a reasonable manner of what this means. Limitations must be related to the fitness of the provider to perform covered medical services, for example, capable to perform services in a professionally competent, safe, legal, and ethical manner. As I've stated for several years now, there is a strong factual basis surrounding this bill and the rationale supporting a determination that Planned Parenthood is not a qualified provider, looking at the Fifth and Eighth Circuit cases. From the incredibly racist past of Planned Parenthood's founder, with articles written by her on eugenics, to videos of Planned Parenthood's branches selling off aborted baby body parts, letters written by former Planned Parenthood employees highlighting the racist founding and abusive behavior, to recent litigation where evidence is clear that branches of Planned Parenthood, even within the state, are unsanitary and unsafe, it is clear that our tax dollars should be, should not be siphoned away from qualified healthcare providers to a facility that has taken part in these horrific acts. And, Mr. Chair, I will, I will state, you know, it's been brought up that there's not going to be enough healthcare facilities to fill the gap. When you look at what Planned Parenthood has said in the past, that abortions only make up 3% of its services. Over the years, you have seen investigators calling to obtain mammograms and other women healthcare needs, but were told that certain facilities did not have the ability to do so. When you look at 2020, roughly 97% of the Planned Parenthood services for pregnant women went to abortions over prenatal care or adoptions. Looking at the FQHCs, it has been stated last year, and again, this year, you'll probably hear it in testimony, that there are enough FQHCs that have full-service capabilities that will be able to pick up the needs outside of the abortive care. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony, Senator. Any questions for the Senator? Seeing none? Since we've, we've got some similarities in testimonies, if you were against SJR 8 and also against Senate or Senate Bill 160, if you wouldn't mind just to combine those as opposed to repeating your testimony, if it's the same especially. We're going to go back now on this particular bill and go for support.
Looking at the FQHCs, it has been stated last year, and again this year, you'll probably hear it in testimony, that there are enough FQHCs that have full-service capabilities that will be able to pick up the needs outside of the abortive care. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony, Senator. Any questions for the Senator? Seeing none? Since we've got some similarities in testimonies, if you were against SJR 8 and also against Senate Bill 160, if you wouldn't mind just to combine those as opposed to repeating your testimony, if it's the same especially. We're going to go back now on this particular bill and go for support. Support for, we're going to go support for, and then we'll go, because I think we've got significant opposition, so we'll go back to that. I've just been informed we need to stay in opposition, so, very good. Let's stay in opposition to SJR 160 and SJR 8 and Senate Bill 160.
Hi. My name is Chacha Rubin. I'm a junior at Clayton High School. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in opposition to Senate Bill 160. Last April, just a few months before Dobbs' decision, I arrived at the realization that I needed to have a somewhat awkward conversation with my mom. I came home from school and told her that I wanted to go on birth control. She kind of turned green and asked if I had a boyfriend, but I didn't. But I was really nervous about the impending Supreme Court decision and how that may impact my ability to have an abortion in the future. Going on birth control would give me some type of reassurance. So my mom took me to the doctor, I explained my fears, and was given a prescription. Fast forward a few months, and I was incredibly frustrated with the Dobbs decision and conservative political agendas. Prohibiting a person's right to abortion violates their bodily autonomy, dignity, and it also has a measurable and significant impact on gender equality and privacy rights granted by the United States Constitution. If you believe that life begins at conception, then logic dictates that kids should be able to drive at 15 years and three months, not 16. I should be able to vote at 17 years and three months, and every person that is incarcerated and is pregnant, that fetus should be given the constitutional rights to not be incarcerated. A person's right to bodily autonomy is a no-brainer. Abortion should be legal. It is essential healthcare, and is supported by seven out of 10 Missourians. I suspect some of you sitting here today who identify as a Republican may support a person's right to choose to have an abortion. And those of you who don't, your agendas, whether rooted in religion, the Constitution, or otherwise, are failing the people of my generation. Our Supreme Court got it wrong in Dobbs, and I stand here today confident that my generation will correct the wrong. Please help me and the rest of Missouri and vote against these antiquated bills. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to go ahead and, if you had, did not have the opportunity to witness or testify on SJR 8, and you have the same testimony for, where are we at? 160, then can you just add on your witness form that your testimony is similar? Just that way, we're sure to make sure that your voice is heard in both bills, so, thank you. Is there anybody else testifying against? Thank you.
Thank you, members of the committee, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Maggie Olivia. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm here today on behalf of Pro Choice Missouri to testify in opposition to these bills. We know that bans on abortion and all forms of sexual and reproductive healthcare, like preventative care at Planned Parenthood, directly correlate with high rates of maternal mortality. In 2020, we found, let me back it up. In 2020, maternal and birthing parent death rates in states with the most restrictions on access to abortion, like the state of Missouri, had 62% higher rates of maternal and birthing parent mortality than states with access to abortion care. In short, restrictions on reproductive healthcare access leads to poor reproductive health outcomes. There's been some questions earlier about the services provided at Planned Parenthood. I can personally attest that the services provided at Planned Parenthood are critical, expert, and unattainable at other centers. These folks are well-trained and trauma-informed, expert sexual reproductive healthcare training. As a survivor of sexual violence, I cannot handle non-trauma-informed gynecology appointments. I can tell you I've tried many, and now that I even do have insurance, which I did not have before, before being employed, I still go to Planned Parenthood for that care because it is unmatched. Like we've, a couple of people have stated earlier, the maternal mortality rates in Missouri and the most recent PAMA report show that we have some of the highest rates of maternal mortality, both nationally and internationally, and that 82% of those deaths were deemed to be preventable. Services named that could address those preventable deaths include access to mental health resources throughout pregnancy, counseling, increased coverage of postpartum care for low-income mothers and families, like those who rely on Medicaid, and increased uniformity and trauma-informed culturally competent practices, all care that Planned Parenthood health centers are experts in. Is that my time?
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony. Is there any question for the witness? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Ron Baer. I'm a registered lobbyist. I'm here today on behalf of Planned Parenthood Great Plains votes, and we just want to be on the record in opposition. We have great concerns that this is going to have some serious access, or it's going to limit the access to healthcare.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Yes?
I do have one question. Is it, the question I asked previously, since you're not doing abortions, how will that limit access?
Sir, I believe that the main concern is the fact that both these bills, whether it be SJR 8 or 160, it references affiliates. And it's not clear what that definition means. So we have affiliates across the state, we have affiliates across the nation, and if you're saying that we can't, that you're not going to fund Planned Parenthood or its affiliates, then this is going to have an access-
Sir, can you talk into the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
This is going to limit the access to care.
You heard my statement earlier about the resolution. It's just, don't do abortions and you don't lose funding. And so maybe we can talk more about that.
I'd be happy to speak with you offline.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Any other testimony or witnesses in opposition to 160? No? All right.
I'm confused on the process. So I testify on SJR 8? Can I testify on SB 160?
You may.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have, I'm going to respond directly to something the Senator asked.
Okay. They just asked that we don't repeat your testimony? Just state your position.
Yeah, so Michelle Trippiano, Missouri Family Health Council, and I just want to respond directly to something that Senator Schorer stated, that, again, people can, there's lots of other places that people can go. And I think that there's a grave misunderstanding of how specifically low-income folks and folks on Medicaid access care. There are not providers everywhere. Many private providers do not actually accept Medicaid patients. And so, again, there is a safety net of clinics and health departments, federally qualified health centers, certain hospital-based clinics, community action agencies, and Planned Parenthood that make up that safety net. And what I'm here to tell you is it is at capacity. Lots of safety net providers have eight-to-12-week waiting periods, eight-to-12-week waiting times or wait time for a new patient. Do you know what happens in eight-to-12 weeks if you're seeking birth control? You can then become pregnant during that time. What we need is actually more capacity in the safety net, not putting a gigantic hole in that safety net. Where can you, Planned Parenthood has same-day, next-day, next-week appointments. Again, we're not saying one is better than the other. We need all the providers working together because we've underfunded the safety net for years. And so the safety net is at its breaking point. In fact, it's broken already. Therefore, we have these 12-week wait times. And so you cannot say, well, you can't go to Planned Parenthood anymore, just find somewhere else to go, because there is nowhere else to go. Maybe you can wait 12 weeks, but most likely you can't in order to access this critical care. And so there's just a grave misunderstanding of how people, especially those with low incomes and are Medicaid, are accessing the care, and we should be reducing those barriers, actually finding more funding to put into the safety nets, so there are more places that folks can go, but not eliminating an expert in that care.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Okay, so at this time, we're going to take, there was some confusion, and so we're trying to set it right. I stepped out for a gubernatorial appointment. What we want to ensure is that everybody who is in favor and in opposition of SJR 8 and 160 have an opportunity to speak. So if you have a witness form, please, write.
You can put both numbers on one witness form. Just please make sure you indicate which way, or both.
In opposition to, or for, or both. Just make that delineation really clear for us on the witness forms, please. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're totally fine. Again, my name is Elise Kelly, and I'm just putting my support in opposition to this bill.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Okay. Who do you work for?
Oh, I'm a volunteer for Pro Choice Missouri.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, Samuel Lee with Campaign Life Missouri to go on record in support of Senate Bill 160. I'm not going to repeat what has already been said about Planned Parenthood. I would focus on a very important part of this bill, which is particularly on bottom of Page 1 and the top of Page 2, that this would empower Missouri citizens to prevent the state or its political subdivisions from being coerced, compelled, or commandeered by the federal government to enact, administer, or enforce a federal regulatory program that directly or indirectly funds abortion. And then there's, the next subdivision has similar language. The Biden administration is not only trying to repeal the Hyde Amendment, the Hyde Amendment, which of course prohibits most funding for abortion, but some administration officials are even wanting to use Medicaid to pay for travel for out-of-state for abortions. That's unprecedented. And that would be used for transportation, it could be used for hotel rooms, and sadly, ironically, for childcare. So the federal government would want to compel the state of Missouri through our Medicaid program to pay for an abortion doctor in another state to do abortions by travel. This is what the city of St. Louis is attempting to do with ARPA funds, and the people of Missouri should have the ability, through this statute, to push back and prevent that from happening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyway, yeah. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa Welberry. I am the Vice President of Policy and Advocacy at Planned Parenthood of the St. Louis Region and Southwest Missouri. I will not repeat my testimony from the last, from SJR 8, but I do want to address something the sponsor said about Planned Parenthood and racism and eugenics. Planned Parenthood recognizes that Margaret Sanger was our founder. We are not hiding from that, and in fact, we believe it is important to recognize her beliefs in eugenics. In order to renounce them and dismantle institutions of racism, it is central to our mission to advance an equitable healthcare system. And conversely, this legislation targets and discriminates against people who rely on publicly-funded insurance for preventive services, and those are disproportionately people of color and disproportionately because of those institutions of racism. So co-opting racist language to attack Planned Parenthood is weaponizing and politicizing an issue that is about public health. It will not distract Missourians from the reality that this legislation is discriminatory against people who rely on Planned Parenthood for their preventive services. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none, thank you. Any other testimony? Are we in favor? Are we still doing? How was it started? Okay, that's, we'll just keep up whatever was going. And thank you so much, all of you, for being here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, for the record, Susan Klein, representing Missouri Right to Life, here to go on record in support of Senate Bill 160. I will not repeat what I said from SJR 8. It is very relevant also to this bill as well. I will expand on what Mr. Lee said, in that not only are they trying to transport women with public tax dollars in St. Louis, but also in Kansas City. So we ask you to help us as pro-life Missourians not to fund the destruction of an innocent human life and destroying women's lives as they move forward in being able to deal with the issue of abortion. So we're asking for your help.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none, thank you again.
Hello, I'm still Timothy Faber and still with the Missouri Baptist Convention. But in regard to Senate Bill 160 in particular, this bill, I want to speak in favor of it. This bill asserts Missouri's rights under the 10th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, and in doing so, it defends the right of every preborn Missourian to the universal and divine right of life.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anybody here to testify against?
Hello, Madam Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and testify in opposition to, is it SJR, or SB 160 and SJR 19 or 8? Sorry, a little, 8. My name is Dana Sandweiss. I'm here in opposition today because Missourians deserve access to basic reproductive healthcare to control their own bodies and to decide when to be pregnant and give birth to children. By restricting patients' abilities to choose their own healthcare professionals, you're putting Missourians' health at risk. This will not only hurt these patients, but all Missourians. Public funding is currently barred from paying for abortion care. The restrictions in SB 160 and SJR 8 will only harm patients' basic healthcare needs, including accessing preventative care, including birth control, STI testing, treatment, cancer screening, that are provided at Planned Parenthood. 52% of Planned Parenthood patients depend on Missouri's family safety net. Planned Parenthood plays a vital role, as you've heard today, in the healthcare safety nest in Missouri by providing thousands of patients with high-quality care that's both accessible and comprehensive. I urge this committee to oppose these bills and oppose putting the lives of thousands of Missourians at risk and instead spend your time and tax dollars in this capital to work to make Missourians' lives better, safer, and more welcoming and inclusive. I urge these committee members to vote no and oppose SB 160 and SJR 8. Thank you.
Got it right. Good job. Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? In favor of?
Again, my name is Jeremy Jacobs. I'm with Bound for Life St. Louis. In addition to what I stated earlier on SJR 8, with SB 160, I think there's an important distinction. There are many active conversations, as you all are aware, in this building about how easily and how often we should be amending our state constitution. So SB 160 is obviously a very different approach. Your body also struggles in a balance of power with the other two branches of government. And so I would encourage you to seize control of the power that you have and pass SB 160 as a statutory way to limit funding for these abortion providers.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony. In opposition?
Hi. Thank you. My name is Tori Schaefer, and I'm attorney for the American Civil Liberties Union of Missouri, and we are submitting testimony in opposition to both of those bills.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness?
Thank you.
Thank you. In favor?
Once again, Jamie Morris of the Missouri Catholic Conference, just want to go on record in support of Senate Bill 160.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none, thank you. Anymore in favor of?
Valen, representing O'Meara County Republican Committee and the Missouri Republican-
Bev Aylent, representing Warren County Republican Committee and the Missouri Republican County Committee Association, go in favor of S B one, I'm sorry, one sixty.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to testify for informational purposes only? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to S J R nineteen. Senator Moon, proceed when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Mike Moon. I represent the Missouri twenty-ninth Senatorial District. I'm here to present S J R nineteen. I remember years ago when I was in the House, I was sitting on the floor reading statutes, of all things. In chapter one, when I got down to section two oh five, it read that the life of each human begins at conception. And it preceded that. It said, "The General Assembly of the State finds that the life of each human begins at conception." And my jaw actually dropped open. I, I didn't know that was in the statute. As I read down the statute, though, it said that this particular law was subject only to the Constitution of the United States, decisional interpretations thereof by the United States Supreme Court. And that's where the, the wrench went into its system there because we had, of course, Roe v. Wade was decided back in seventy-three. And, and June of this past year, Mayor June of this past year, it was overturned, rightly returning to the states their proper authority to determine what actions and positions we take on when life begins and how to protect that life. Back to two oh five for just a second, it says that the unborn children have protectable interest in life, health, and well-being, and the natural parents of the unborn children have a protectable interest in life, health, and well-being of their unborn child. I thought that was important. And when this constitutional amendment is passed, would recognize that nothing in the Missouri Constitution shall be construed to secure or protect a right to abortion. I found that the American College of Pediatrics states that human biological research confirms that life begins at conception or fertilization. That's important. I, I think we all know when life begins. And with that decision that was made by the overturn of Roe, that again returned the proper authority to the states to determine our positions. I, I did some thought about this, and over the last fifty years, more than sixty million persons have been murdered. We talk a lot about our state. We're lacking in workers. We want more money to run the government. Now, let's say that one fiftieth of that sixty million plus was a portion to Missouri. That's one point two million people gone. Now, if allowed to live, they'd be fifty years old now. They would have been childbearing age. Let's say that just half of those had children. Excuse me. That'd be six hundred thousand additional residents of Missouri, who also would be about twenty-five at least. And they, if, if half of them had children, would have another three hundred thousand alive today. That's added together two point one million to the rolls. We'd have six point two or three million people in, or excuse me, eight point three million people in Missouri. That's considerable. Not just because of the money, not just because of the additional workers, but because life is valuable. And that's why I think we need to pass S J R nineteen, to let the voters weigh in on this and let them, I think they'll confirm with us that life is precious and it should not be snuffed out prematurely through abortive actions. With that, I'll take questions.
Any questions for the wit, for Senator Moon? Seeing none? I do have one, Senator.
All righty.
I've been getting some emails regarding how a lot of this is driven by, by this, this agenda, this anti-abortion agenda is driven by religious talking points. Can you speak to that?
Madam Chair, thanks for the question. People have asked me not to inject my religious beliefs in this. I, I think you all know where I stand on that. But in this presentation, I mentioned nothing about my faith. It's scientific fact, life begins at conception. And if, if we believe what's in statute, we believe that each of these persons are individuals with all the natural rights that are afforded to residents of Missouri. And I think we need to further that by saying that we, we need to make this a constitutional provision too, to make that even a higher authority in our law. There, there is a higher authority over that too, and we'll be judged by that someday. That's the only religious connotation I've injected in this whole thing. It's, it's scientific fact when life begins. Thank you for that question.
Thank you. Now taking testimony in favor of S J R nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Committee, for the opportunity to address you again. Timothy Faber. And yes, I am with the Missouri Baptist Convention. Yes, it is a religious entity. However, as a religious entity, our desire is to pursue truth. The truth of the matter is that upon the fertilization of the egg, a new being is created that has a separate DNA from either parent, similar, yes, but a separate and distinct, unique DNA from either parent, and a separate blood type. The blood is not the blood of the mother, except in rare medical abnormalities. As those who pursue truth in all its forms, the Missouri Baptist Convention would strongly and unequivocally support this bill.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anybody here to testify for as well?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. For the record, Susan Klein, representing Missouri Right to Life, here to go on record in support of S J R nineteen. And we thank the sponsor for bringing it forward. Missouri has long been a pro-life state, as I've stated before. We have worked very hard, over fifty years, to basically protect that unborn child in the womb, in the womb, from conception on. In the early days, we heard the other side always say, "Oh, no, it's just a mass of cells." Well, as technology has grown and we've seen, that baby in the womb is exactly what we've been trying to protect all along. A baby that has a heartbeat, a baby that has little fingers and toes, is just trying to grow and survive. Missouri has worked not only to help those women find the help that they need through alternatives to abortion, Show Me Healthy Babies, and even in the program that you passed last night to protect women after the baby is born, or perfected, sorry. So, you know, so, so the fight to protect life also has, in our statute, we have exceptions for life of the mother. Life of the mother, and, and specifically, one eighty-eight oh one five, in the medical emergency, it says that, you know, for life of the mother, "A condition which, based on reasonable medical judgment, so complicates the medical condition of a pregnant woman as to necessitate the immediate abortion of her pregnancy to avert the death of the pregnant woman, or for which a delay will credit a serious risk of substantial and irreversible physical impairment of a major bodily function of the pregnant woman." So our legislative body have worked very hard over these years to basically save the unborn child, give the mother the protection that she needs. And even in the case of an ectopic pregnancy, it's a risk, it's a, it's a life-threatening situation for the mother. So, so acknowledging and recognizing that we are a pro-life state and that we do not support the intentional taking of the unborn child's life, anyway, we support S J R nineteen.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Samuel Lee with Campaign Life Missouri to go on record in support of S J R nineteen. I'm not going to repeat what the other witnesses have said. I, I do, first of all, thank Senator Moon for sponsoring this. And I think it's very appropriate, the placement of this in our Constitution, because this would be put in Article One of our Constitution, which is our Bill of Rights. So the right to free speech, the right to assembly, the right to worship, the right to farm, the right to bear arms. This would put the right for the unborn child to have a life in our Constitution. I would, secondly, I want to mention that four states have similar abortion-neutral amendments to their Constitution that were passed prior to the Dobbs decision. Alabama, Louisiana, West Virginia, and Tennessee. Tennessee was the first in two thousand and fourteen. Since then, two states have attempted to put similar language in the, in their constitutions, not exactly the same, but similar in concept. Kansas, and that was defeated in August of last year, as well as Kentucky, which was also defeated. You know, I think it's just important to know what other states have attempted, where it's been successful, and also in more recent times where it's failed as well. But we certainly support this, or some attempt to put something in the Constitution to protect the right to life and to protect the lives of pregnant moms in Missouri.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? I have a question.
Yes.
Can you reiterate those four states that you?
Yes, I'm sorry. Tennessee, Alabama, West Virginia, and Louisiana. Okay? They're all what is, are called among the people, those who deal with this, abortion-neutral amendments. So it doesn't, it doesn't say you can or can't have an abortion, it just says it's not secured by the Constitution because the state Supreme Court has found those states found a right to abortion. So they, out of necessity, had to do that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other witness testifying in favor of?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, Jamie Morris of the Missouri Catholic Conference, wanting to go on record in support of S J R, I can't even read right now, nineteen. I'm getting all the numbers confused this morning. So, no, I want to thank the sponsor for bringing this forward. We are in support of this. You know, obviously, my argument would be that the Constitution is neutral, does not speak to or, or give a right to abortion, but I think it's good to have that clarification in, in writing and in the Constitution itself. And so for that reason, you know, we are in support of this and want to thank you all for hearing it this morning.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else testifying in favor of?
Hi, my name is Jeremy Jacobs, Bound for Life St. Louis, testifying in favor of S J R nineteen. Thank you, Senator Moon, for sponsoring this bill, bringing it forward. I brought a prop this morning. I folded it up just so you can see the portion that I want to focus on. This is our state flag.
Okay, that's, that's, I'm sorry, but props are not allowed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
You can speak to it.
Wish we had a state flag. Okay. Our, our flag bears the stain of history, and I think it's important to remember that, that stain. And that stain is that Roman numeral on our flag that says eighteen-twenty. We didn't actually become a state until eighteen-twenty-one. But the reason that, if you know your history, the reason that we didn't become a state until eighteen-twenty-one is because of the Missouri Compromise. And we entered this, this union as a slave state. And it's important to remember the mistakes of history. Our Supreme Court, our U.S. Supreme Court, and our Missouri Supreme Court participated in that mistake. There was a resolution, I think, last year that formally disavowed the, the Missouri State's decision in the Dred Scott case, finally, after a hundred, more than a hundred years. We, we've seen courts be activist and wrongly activist, both with Dred Scott and Plessy v. Ferguson, as well as Roe v. Wade, and our, our U.S. Supreme Court finally overturned that last year, and we're grateful for that. But it's important to prevent that activism from our Missouri State Supreme Court in the future. And so that's why S J R nineteen is, is important, so that we don't repeat these mistakes of history and we learn from them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Anyone else testifying in favor of the bill?
Hi, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Bev Aylent. On behalf of the Warren County Republican Committee and the Missouri Republican County Committee Association, want to thank Senator Moon for bringing this forward and, of course, and supported it. One either believes that the unborn child is a human being and entitled to all the protections that every born human being has afforded by our Constitution and our statutes, or they believe it's the property of the mother, and the mother can do what she wants to do with that property. On the Republican Party was founded on, at another time in our history, a sad time in our history, regarding human beings that were considered property at the disposal of their owner. So we just want to go on record. Thank you, Senator Moon.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness?
Thank you.
Anyone else here to testify in favor of the bill? Seeing none? We're going to move to opposition, so.
Thank you, Chair members of the committee. Again, my name is Maggie Olivia. I use she/her pronouns. I'm here today on behalf of Pro Choice Missouri. And as you may have noticed on my T-shirt, I'm also an abortion storyteller. Abortion saved my life, and I'm here to correct some misinformation that we've heard earlier today. I've, I heard the sentence that life begins at conception is a scientific fact. That is not the case. The largest national accrediting groups of medical professionals do not agree with that statement. I would also like to say that the consequences of being denied a wanted abortion are drastic. The largest study of the long-term effects of the consequences of being denied a wanted abortion took place over ten years with hundreds of participants. It found that folks who were denied access to wanted abortion care were likely to experience lifelong economic insecurity, and consequently, so are their families. The majority of these folks were already parenting at the time of being denied an abortion. Folks denied wanted abortion care are also more likely to experience future complications with pregnancy and birthing and any future pregnancies, and they are also drastically more likely to remain in relationship with abusive partners. Abortion is healthcare. Any contact with sexual and healthcare providers, like abortion providers, is essential to combating sexual and domestic violence. We know that folks are more likely to report experiencing this violence to trusted sexual health, health, sexual and reproductive healthcare providers than they are to anybody else if they ever are to report, and that is through that trusted relationship. Again, the consequences of being denied a wanted abortion are drastic, life-threatening, life-altering, and alter not only the person themselves, but generations of their family to come. Please vote no on this bill.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, committee members, my name is Sam Howacourse, and I'm from St. Charles, Missouri. I'm here with Pro Choice Missouri, and I'm here to speak in opposition to S B one sixty. I'm here today to share my own abortion testimony. In 2015, I was twenty-two years old and going to Mizzou while working as a residential advisor and yoga instructor on campus. The day I found out I was pregnant, I was alone in my dorm bathroom, unaware of all the hurdles I was about to face, both personally and systemically. My ex-partner made it evident that he wanted no part of me or a pregnancy, and my family was ashamed, disappointed, and couldn't promise me a stable home if I were to pursue my pregnancy. From the minute I found out, I understood the clock was ticking and that I only had days to make a decision. While going to school and working full-time, I then had to manage and plan another two appointments across the state at least seventy-two hours apart, all while trying to secure rides. Since I was not six weeks along, I was able to go through with a medication abortion. When the day came for my second appointment, I was lucky enough to go through the steps with another woman hand in hand. We had only met that day, but you would have thought we were lifelong friends the way we held each other throughout the process. Again, I'm here today because abortion is normal and a fundamental human right. Access to abortion is essential and popular. Abortion is healthcare. Abortion is an act of love, and people who have abortions deserve dignity and respect. I believe these bills will cause lasting harms to Missourians, their families, and their loved ones. I urge you to vote no on S B one sixty.
So for clarity, do you want this to be on S J R one sixty or on S J R nineteen?
Nineteen, sorry. My bad.
No worries. Thank you for the clarity. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else testifying against?
Good morning. Again, I am Amy Hammer.
Again, I am Amy Hammerman. I'm here on behalf of the National Council of Jewish Women. We are a nonprofit organization in the metropolitan St. Louis area, based, focused on community service, advocacy, and education, based on our belief in holding Jewish values. I did want to start out by responding to Senator Moon's comment that this bill is religion-neutral. The discussion about life beginning at conception is a matter of debate. The American College of Pediatrics that he cited is not a professional organization, it is an advocacy organization, and the professional medical associations throughout the United States are not in agreement as to when life begins in terms of a scientific basis. What we're left with then is what people guided by their religious views, their own traditions and values. I believe that passage of this law and amending our Constitution to preclude preemptively a right to abortion will create a Constitution inconsistency, notably the right to freedom of religion in this state, which my understanding is we all hold to be very important and dear to us. From the Jewish perspective, we do not believe that life begins at conception, and moreover, the right to abortion is, in some cases, a commandment, particularly when the life or health of the pregnant person is in danger. Believe that eliminating the right to abortion infringes on free exercise of our religion, and it does establish some concern about the establishment of a particular religious viewpoint by this state, which contravenes our Constitution. We believe that Missourians are entitled to not have their Constitution preclude this right.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify against?
Members of the committee, thank you for your opportunity to testify today in opposition to SJR 19. My name's Stacy Knapp. I'm a member of Pro Choice Missouri, and I'm here to testify in opposition, because Missourians deserve more. I'm a full-time nanny, and I've recently started canvassing for Pro Choice Missouri, a student at UMSL, studying public policy administration, and a single mother to a five-and-a-half-year-old daughter. I had an abortion before the birth of my daughter, and it was absolutely the right decision for me at the time. I was not prepared financially, emotionally, or physically to have a child then, but I am so grateful that safe and accessible health care was available to me at that time in my life, especially now as a single mother due to an unplanned pregnancy. Planned Parenthood was the first place I went after my second positive pregnancy test. I was on birth control at the time and had taken a Plan B. The staff there not only referred me to an OB-GYN, they also helped me get signed up for WIC and Medicaid, and also made sure that I was emotionally okay and made me feel safe and seen. Planned Parenthood was also where I ended up having to go to get my IUD after the birth of my daughter, because I was refused that health care at mercy due to the hospital's religious affiliation. Having an abortion was my choice, and having a daughter was also my choice. Neither were easy. I love my daughter more than anything in the world, but again, I chose that. That choice came with challenging complications and consequences. Not only did my pregnancy keep me trapped in an abusive relationship, it also led to serious, life-threatening complications during my birth. 30 minutes after delivering my daughter, my midwife realized I had a serious condition called placenta accretia, which causes severe blood loss and hemorrhaging, and often results in a blood transfusion or a hysterectomy. It can likely cause serious complications during my future pregnancies. I'm absolutely terrified to give birth again, and I hope that I will never be forced to. Not only was my birth complicated, but so was came afterwards. I struggled to escape an abusive partner due to financial restrictions of being a single mom. I ended up having to file restraining order against my daughter's father, but he was still legally allowed rights to her daughter, and to this day, I struggle to co-parent or receive any financial support from my abuser. But I'm fortunate to have family and friends that help me, support me financially and emotionally, but that is not the case for many birthing people in this state. I urge you to vote no on SJR 19, because restricting access and banning abortion perpetuates cycles of domestic violence abuse, prevents people from getting lifesaving care, and treats birthing people as second-class citizens. Defunding Planned Parenthood not only takes away crucial access to health care, such as cancer screenings, but also stops would-be and current parents from getting care and connections they need or prevent a future one.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify against the bill?
Hello, members of the committee and Madam Chairperson. My name is Dana Sandwise. I am a volunteer at ACLU, Planned Parenthood, Pro Choice Missouri, and president of the Access Missouri Advisory Board. I live in St. Louis and the parent of two sexually active teenage boys, who are friends with many sexually active teenagers. We're sexual beings, and we have sex. Whether we take precautions to avoid getting pregnant or not, we get pregnant. One in every fourth person able to get pregnant will have an abortion in their lives. With the current restrictions on abortion access in Missouri, my boys do not want to live here after they graduate. They're not alone. I hear this from many people and many teens. I have friends in other states that tell me that their children will not apply to school in Missouri for the same reason. This is very upsetting to me. I love Missouri. I raised my children here, and I would love for them to come home, and for their friends to come home with them. But the current restrictions and further attempts in SJR 19 to restrict access to basic health care, they do not choose to live here. I know many others, I know many others will not either. And for all sexually active people in Missouri, their lives are put at risk by restrictions on abortion access. Abortion access is, by the American College of OB-GYNs considers, an essential component of comprehensive, evidence-based health care. For these reasons and many others, I urge you to oppose SJR 19.
Thank you. Any questions for the witness? Seeing none? Thank you.
Do I leave this here?
Yes.
Good morning. Again, my name is Vanessa Welberry. I'm the vice president of Policy and Advocacy at Planned Parenthood of the St. Louis Region and Southwest Missouri. I'm testifying in opposition to SJR 19. Advocates of Planned Parenthood is committed to building a future where equitable, accessible sexual and reproductive health care is available to all Missourians, and this body could be working to advance the many interconnected public health policies that advance and improve the health of Missouri patients, families, and communities. Yet, here we are, spending time on a proposal that seeks to harm the most marginalized Missourians, including women and families with low incomes, LGBTQ folks, and people of color. This body could be working to improve access to services like birth control, cancer screenings, and STI testing and treatment, yet here we are explaining it again, the harms and illegality of discriminating against Missourians who rely on public insurance programs to access this critical preventive care. Missouri's maternal mortality rates are increasing, our state's black maternal mortality rates are unconscionably higher. The COVID pandemic has strained our already-stretched public health infrastructure, and we continue to experience a statewide syphilis outbreak. Yet, here we are wasting time on political showmanship that addresses not a single one of these public health crises. And I want to address the commentary about the medical community and the American Academy of Pediatrics. After the decision in Dobbs v. Jackson, AAP was one of the more than 75 healthcare, national professional healthcare organizations that released a joint statement denouncing that decision. And the wave of abortion bans going into effect in states across the country, they warned that this would harm patients and impair the integrity of the medical profession. Yet, here we are explaining again that abortion bans have devastating consequences for the patients and communities being denied this essential care. Please oppose SJR 19.
Any questions for the witness? Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else testifying against?
Thank you. Hi, Tori Schaefer again, attorney with American Civil Liberties Union of Missouri. We are also in opposition to this bill. I misunderstood and wrote all three on one form. Do you want me to fill out an additional form? I think we're okay. Okay. Love it. Save in paper. Thank you.
Anyone else here to testify against the bill?
Sheltrupiano, Missouri Family Health Counsel, is going on record in opposition.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Is there anyone here to testify for informational purposes only? All right, that, Senator Moon, do you have any closing comments?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.